So I'm going to go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's October 28, 2020. I will note for the record that in addition to myself, we also are joined by Lee Jones and Tiffany Giffens, so we are all present. And we'll begin with our statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we will move on to department updates. We'll begin with Ms. Penny Cottle from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. What a nice fall day that we have, right? So I do have some updates and mainly, you know, at this point, I know that I probably sound like a broken record, but we'll go through these and kind of update people. In looking at some of the data this morning, I do expect to see a larger than usual number of new cases on today's dashboard. And that's concerning. It could be that we've had some late reporting or something like that, so that the numbers today are larger than normal due to that. But it doesn't really matter because it still means that our numbers are going up. They're going in the wrong direction. Monroe County, if you look at the metrics map and the color coded map, we've been in yellow for several weeks now. When that map first came out and, you know, we started moving in a better direction and we thought we might make it to blue. But we've been in yellow for a while. I think we will still be in yellow today. But if increases continue, we very easily could be in that orange as opposed to yellow or blue. And I realize that we are in IU country and we love our red. We love cream and crimson and we like our red and we aren't typically real fond of blue around here. But in this case, we want to see that metrics map be blue. We do not want to see it be red. And we've really done pretty well in our community, but we cannot, cannot act as though this virus is gone because it is not. It is still here. And what we're really seeing is we're not just seeing IU cases. So please, people should not think that this is all because the students have come back. We are seeing cases across all ages. We are seeing them across the community. And it just tells me that people are letting their guard down, that, you know, whether we're just tired or whatever the reasons that we are taking less precautions now than we did weeks ago. So I really want people to think about what we're doing, what we're involved in. It doesn't matter if we're home gating, you know, we're watching the games and we're gathering. We can do those things safely. We can visit with friends or family. We can find ways to connect and do that in a safe manner. You know, it doesn't matter if it's tailgating, visiting friends, if we're at a rally, if we're planning trick or treating. All of those things can be done safely if we do them in the right manner. And so we just need to really remember that we have the tools to control this infection and reduce the spread. If we will continue to watch our distancing, maintain that six foot distance, continue to wear our masks, avoid large crowds, especially when people are close together and they're unmasked. Stay home when we're sick. Continue our hand washing and hand hygiene practices. Get your flu vaccination now. Make plans and commit to getting the COVID vaccine when that becomes available next year. We can do this. We can stop the spread of this infection if we use the tools that we have. The other thing that I want to talk about is testing. And our community testing site has been delayed a little bit, but it should be up by the mid-November. We had some construction, things that we needed to do that have just taken longer. I think we really, we just had an ambitious goal of getting it up and going probably that was too ambitious. So that's still coming. The Optum site will be here. Those are scheduled throughout Indiana to continue through the end of the year. The state has told us that the Optum sites will stay through December. But I want to talk a little bit about testing. And testing does not cause infections. It identifies them. So we identify what we use testing for is to identify cases so that we can put our interventions into place so that we stop the transmission. And we do this for lots of communicable diseases. If you are symptomatic, we need you to stay home. Remember, we said stay home if you're ill. If you are symptomatic, stay home, make arrangements for testing. And the only thing that you should be leaving for is that testing. And then you return home and you isolate yourself from others until those results are back. If they are negative, then we still want you to stay home until you're better so that you're not passing influenza or whatever else you might have, strep throat, you know, whatever it is. If you are positive, if your test comes back positive, then you have already been isolating. So you haven't been spreading that infection while you were waiting. And you will continue to isolate for those 10 days or and until you do not have a fever for at least 24 hours and your symptoms have improved. So 10 days is the minimum. Maybe you will have to isolate for 10 or 12 days. But keep those things in mind. If you are in close contact, you quarantine for 14 days because it could take 14 days for you to develop illness and become infectious. So we need you to quarantine, stay away from others so that you are not unknowingly passing that infection. There's no way to know if you will become infectious or not, or what day you might become infectious. So if you, you know, you quarantine, you stay away from others so that you break that cycle of transmission. And if we do those things, we stop the spread of this infection. It is when we don't take those things seriously and we don't take the other precautions seriously that transmission continues. So if we continue these things, we can certainly stop and slow the spread of this infection. We can get on the other side of this. And we all want things to kind of go back to some sort of normal. I don't know what normal is now, but we want to go back to some sense of normal. And we can do that if we stop the spread of this infection. We cannot do it if we continue to act as though the infection isn't here. Halloween is this weekend, and so here's a good test for everybody, right? It's how do we do that safely? We know that traditional trick or treating is seen as a higher risk activity, so we want people to avoid that. But it doesn't mean that you can't be creative. You still can't enjoy the holiday. So hopefully you've put plans in place for how you're going to do that. Maybe it's a scavenger hunt at home or in the neighborhood. Maybe it's kind of a very well spaced walk through the neighborhood so that people can see the costumes. But there's lots of trick or treating. Maybe you're handing out some candy, but you're doing it in a more safe manner than what we traditionally do. There are lots of ways to do these things. The CDC has guidance out there if you haven't decided how you're going to do that yet. So we encourage everyone to be very mindful, to avoid groups and make sure that you're wearing the proper mask when you're out and about and around others, that we're maintaining that social distancing. We can do this and we can stay safe and we can do it and still enjoy the weekend. We can SMASH, we've talked about SMASH, that acronym. So six foot distancing, masking, avoiding crowds, staying home when you're sick, good hand hygiene. These are the things we can do. If we join forces and we do this, then we can conquer this infection. Just remember thinking weed, not me. And it's how we'll get through this infection. And as we come inside, we need to be even more mindful than we've been over the past few months about our actions and the things that we can do to not only protect ourselves, but to protect our friends and our family and our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate all the good information, not good news, but it's what we're seeing across the country. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Well, it's not good news, although it is good to know it. I just hope that everyone pays close attention to what you have to say.
Commissioner Giffens?
I just want to remind people that the township fire departments are offering safe trick or treating options.
For sure. Absolutely. Thank you so much. We've heard it said that we're turning the corner, but it's into a very dark tunnel right now. And we don't know what the outcome's going to be. So everybody stay safe. It's very important. We're tired of it. It's not tired of us. All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. And I'm going to go next to Ms. Ridge. And while I'm doing that, Ms. Dayton, if you would bring Kate Petroline over from attendee to panelist, that would be great. So we can get an update from emergency management. Thank you. Ms. Ridge?
Good morning. No big updates. Of course, it's been a rainy, wet week. So we did put in for the latest call for community crossings that closed on Friday. So we got those submitted and those are to be announced in November, December, whether or not we're awarded any of those projects. So just moving on, tree trimming, doing some patching, things like that, still mowing. But again, we're going to have some heavy rains tomorrow. So I just urge everyone, especially with the leaves falling on the road, it makes it very slick roadways, almost like ice patches. So with that much rain and a lot of leaves on the road, I would just encourage everybody to travel safe.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, just reiterate, please be very careful.
Absolutely. Commissioner Giffens?
Good work on getting in the grant applications. Thank you.
Yeah, always on top of it. Excellent. Yeah. And I will, and I will say that the mowing crew came last Friday in the middle of the press conference and I was out on my front porch. It was perfect timing. No, it was great. It was great to see them, you know, anytime. Excellent, excellent work by your staff. Thank everyone for us, please. And now we will go to Ms. Kate Petroline. Good morning, Emergency Management.
Hi. I am sitting in for Allison this morning. She's taking some much needed time off. So I'll go ahead and just dive into just a few updates. I know that every week Allison reminds everyone about the upcoming blood drives. And I just want to, again, remind everyone that it's a very important need right now. We do have a shortage. It's pretty much not only in the county, but across the United States. So if you can, please give blood. Not only are you saving three different lives when you donate blood, but it's also a benefit to you if you choose to, you can get the antibody testing for COVID. So just encouraging everyone that if you have that need to serve your community, please do. Now, in collaboration with the Convention Center and Red Cross and Monroe County Government, we had noticed that people were wanting evening sessions for the blood drive. So tonight is actually the first session for an evening option and it is completely full. So that's a great and exciting thing. And yes, exactly, it's great. So because of that, we have all decided that we are going to make for once a month, more blood drives in the evening from two to seven, and it will be through March. So those dates will be coming. Please look at our website and the redcross.org website. And you can go in there and choose a date and time for the ability to give blood. So that's very exciting news. So again, just to remind everyone about the upcoming ones in November. November 9th, you can give blood from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And November 19th, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And these are all at the County Convention Center. And you can go to redcross.org and choose time and date to reserve your spot. Again, it's all by appointment. So all good news on that side. Secondly, on my list is that Penny had talked about it earlier with trick or treating. We do have a list of all those fire departments that will be participating in giving out candy. So please go on our website and check out those different locations. And they will be doing it on this Saturday on Halloween from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. They will be following CDC guidelines, so that gives a little bit of a sense of security in parents' hearts, making sure that they're getting safe trick or treat options. And finally, I am just reporting out about our THYRA. So our Threat Hazard Identification and Risk Assessment that Allison spoke about last week. It's a very time consuming thing that we must report to our state every year. We have to go through over 50 hazards and assess our capability of addressing that hazard and the probability of it happening in our area. So it does take a really long time to actually get that completed, but we did complete it this week. We're very proud of that. So we sent it off to the state for assessment and look forward to doing it again next year. But as for that, that is all I have today. So thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here today. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Hope that Alan is getting a good rest. She needs it.
Yeah, she needs it. She worked very hard.
Absolutely. Commissioner Giffens?
Would you just give your website so that people will know where to find that information?
Yes, so you can go to our website at co.monroe.in.us. And you can find our Emergency Management Department page in that website.
Right. And you will find, yes, all of the information on safe trick or treating options, including the fire departments. And Ms. Dayton has posted it onto our chat. So excellent. Thanks, everyone. We appreciate you. Thanks for being here with us this morning. And everyone, please do be aware that there is a flood warning out for Monroe County through tomorrow afternoon. And I saw the National Weather Service said, you know, a couple inches of rain, up to four inches locally. So it could be, it could be a lot. So everybody be aware of that, please. All right. And with that, we will move on to Ms. Carolyn Van de Wiel from the Monroe County Election Board. Good morning. You are muted. There you go.
All right. Sorry, I'm trying to get rid of this thing that tells me that I need to start my video. All right. Want to start out with just a shout out to the election workers and our election officials who have been working extremely hard to deal with all of the interesting situations that have come up this year. And also to folks who have stepped up in order to fill the positions that we need to work at the polls. So many of our election workers were seniors and people who are at risk that we were afraid that we would not be able to actually fill those spots. And they are pretty well filled. A lot of people have stepped up to work and we really appreciate that. And they're doing a great job. We're doing training for poll workers on Election Day right now. And it's been very busy with that. As people may have read in the paper or other news sites, we have extended hours a bit in order to help with some of the issues with lines. I know a lot of people want us to open up a second building, but it is not that easy to do. By the time we identified all those issues, probably Election Day would have passed. Being able to staff and get the equipment, which we actually need for Election Day and is being prepared for Election Day, that doesn't really work. So we've added some hours. On Thursday and Friday, we will be open from or until seven, extending that from six. On Saturday, we've extended the hours to the same as during the week. So we will be open from eight until six instead of from nine until four. Hopefully that will allow some people to get in and early vote who need to do so. We do understand that it's difficult for people who work or have other issues to get to the polls. But that's what we can do within the constraints of what we have in terms of time and our COVID issues. The commissioners have actually helped us to enlarge our building this year and to provide extra space. And without COVID, we would be in great shape this year, even with all the people voting because we could probably put two to three more, times more people through that building in an hour. But because we're using tables instead of voting booths in order to keep our voters safe, because we have to social distance, because there are limitations on the number of people that we can put into a building at a given time. We do have lines. We're not as bad as in some places, but we ask people to be patient and to be understanding about that. Given that statement, one of the things that people can do to shorten lines the most is to be prepared to vote. Do your research in advance. You can look at candidate websites. You can look at party websites. You can read the paper and other sources of information. But if you come prepared to vote, then it'll take you a few minutes to fill out that ballot and you'll be in and out of that building in a few minutes. We have people who are taking 15 to 20 minutes to vote. And technically, the state allows two minutes to fill out a general ballot once you got it. We don't time people and we don't force people out. But if you're spending 15 minutes voting, not only will we ask you to wind it up, but you're making other people wait in line longer. So bring a cheat sheet, whatever you need to help you fill out that ballot. But the research should have been done before you got to Election Central. And I think that would also help to move those lines forward. I didn't mention, but voting hours on Monday are statutorily set by the state. So we do have to end at noon. We cannot extend those hours because everybody has to get ready for the next day. So I should have mentioned that. Couple of places that you can go to find information. So if you need to know who's on your ballot, you can go to indianavoters.in.gov or to indianavoters.com, which is the one I can remember more easily. They end up at the same place. But that will tell you all the information that you need to know about who's on your ballot, whether or not your voting status is active, where your precinct is, how to get there, and so forth. If you know where you vote, you can also go to monroecountyvoters.us. And we have a lot of information about our local status there, links to travel board, links to some of the other things that you need. And there are sample ballots on that site as well, if you know which precinct you vote in. And I'll put those in the chat after we get done for people to use. All right. Want to remind everybody that on Election Day, you cannot vote at Election Central. Every year, we get somebody showing up at 5:50 p.m. to vote at Election Central when they need to be across town at their precincts. So on Election Day, you must vote at the polling site assigned to your precinct. And we want to remind people that that may not be the precinct or polling site that you have voted at in the past. Some of our polling sites, we moved some precincts because of either accessibility issues or because of COVID regulations. Some of those sites were very small, cramped, and hard to socially distance. So again, you can check at indianavoters.com to find out which precinct you might have been moved to. You should have gotten a card in the mail earlier this year that also got you that information. But if you've lost it, there are places to look it up. But know that that's where you need to vote. And if it's in St. Joe County, you might want to make time to drive up there on Saturday and early vote because you, or you can vote up there on Election Day, but you won't be able to get there if you check it at five o'clock on Tuesday. So a little bit of preparation goes a long way towards not disenfranchising yourself and not being able to vote. And then I want to bring up the issue of electioneering. So electioneering, for those who don't know, is defined as expressing support or opposition to any candidate or political party, or expressing approval or disapproval of any poll book question in a manner that could reasonably be expected to convey that support or opposition to another individual. The term includes wearing or displaying an article of clothing, which would include a mask, signs, buttons, or placards that states the name of any political party or includes the name, picture, photograph, or other likeness of any currently elected federal, state, or county, or local official. It is a Class A misdemeanor to electioneer within the shoot or the polling site. And in past years, we've had people who have either inadvertently or, you know, with intention tried to do that. We have told them what the law is and they have made mitigations to be inside the polling site without that information displayed. This year, we actually had a gentleman who came in wearing the masks, which clearly identified a candidate. He was asked to, or he was given the opportunity to change that mask for one of ours, which does not have that information on it. He refused. State law says that if you do that, we must allow you to vote. You can't deny that person the opportunity to vote. However, if there is a complaint from our poll workers that is brought before the election board, it can be prosecuted as a Class A misdemeanor. Penalties for that are a jail term of up to one year and a fine of up to $5,000. So it's not a minor incident. If you wish to make that statement and wish to risk those penalties, we will tell you that we will prosecute. We have talked to the Monroe County Prosecutor's Office. They say they will take those cases seriously. We have talked to the co-counsels at the Indiana Election Division because this individual stated there was a Supreme Court case that negated that rule. This is not true. There was a case in Minnesota where the state Supreme Court in Minnesota threw out a case because they said that their electioneering law was too vague. Our election law is much more succinct than the Minnesota one. And our co-counsels have told us that this law is still in effect and there is no superior case that supersedes that law. So we don't mind. If you want to make the statement, be aware that there is now a no tolerance policy in place for any party or any individual who wants to electioneer. We will refer those to the prosecutor's office if it happens. And it's up to voters if they want to make the statement, but we will just let them know that there could be a consequence to doing so.
Great. Thank you so much. Do you have anything else to add? I'm sorry, I didn't want to cut you off.
The only other thing that I will add was your question, which remind me what it was.
Oh, about when election results would be anticipated.
Yes, election results. So again, people need to understand that there are rules on how elections are run and how election results can be counted. And one of those says that we cannot process, we cannot count election votes, prepare election votes to be counted until Election Day. So fortunately, they've moved it back from after the polls closed to 6:00 a.m. At one point, it was at noon. Now we can actually start working on all the absentee ballots at 6:00 a.m. We have a full staff again within our COVID regulations to be doing that. People should also be aware that there are things that happen once those ballots are scanned. The election board has to review all write-in candidates because the scanner can't necessarily identify the name. And Indiana law only allows writing candidates who are certified to be writing candidates by the state to be balanced. So the election board will actually review every single writing candidate, make sure they're on the certified list, and then allow that. make sure they're on the certified list, and then allow that particular race to be counted. We also have to deal with situations where perhaps a voter marks a candidate but makes an inadvertent mark in another box. That would be flagged as an overvote, and we would go in and determine what the intention of the voter was. And as long as we could do that, again, that particular vote would count. But there are a number of things that have to be done to make sure that those are counted properly, so that every vote counts that every voter makes. So we cannot guarantee, given the number of votes, absentee votes that we will process, that we will have election results that night. We will count until probably eleven, and they make a decision about where we are. Should we have a lot of votes yet to process, we may delay those until the next day. We do hope that we'll have our results by Wednesday. But again, it just depends on the number of problems that arise. We would rather get it done correctly than get it done quickly.
Thank you so much. Let's take some questions. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
Thank you so much for having extended the hours and doing what you are to try to help people be able to vote. I'm sure there's still some people who are not going to be able to because of the hours that they work, possibly also combined with childcare problems. And that is truly unfortunate. I'd like to point out that the way this could not be a problem anymore is if Election Day were to be a national holiday. That is something that would help people and be able to vote easily an awful lot. Thanks for all you've done.
Yeah, unfortunately, that one is well above our pay grade. And I would love to see Election Day be made a holiday. I would like to see the hours in Indiana extended at least an extra hour so that people who do vote, if it wasn't a holiday, could do so. I would love to see full funding of election infrastructure by the state and federal government. But none of that has happened, and unfortunately, we can't do much about it. But that would go a long way also to dealing with some of the issues. It's not really a county-level problem. Funding should come from the state and federal government. But we can pour kind of obscene amounts of money into electing particular candidates, but we do not seem to be willing to devote that kind of money to our election infrastructure. So we have done the best we can do within the constraints that we have.
I didn't mean to imply that.
I know you didn't. I'm just making a comment. Yeah.
Think about it like that, because another important factor would be same-day registration. The thirty-day registration manages to disenfranchise, disenfranchise an awful lot of people.
Sure does. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, if we had no excuse absentee ballot requests available too, that would make a difference, especially when we look at the numbers for the primary, where you generally see a lot fewer people voting. I would like to make a correction to what was in the paper this morning about the number of people who have already voted. It should have, their totals at the end of the day on Monday should have been a little over 28,000. Sorry, you know I'm a number wonk. It's just who I am. But with the additional 1,144 people who voted in person yesterday, we know that we at least have over 29,000 people who have voted in Monroe County, which is just phenomenal. Yes, 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 yes. And I know that by the, I'm sure that the additional absentee ballots will be coming in. We know that people are voting today. They will through next Monday. So I know we'll get to well over that 31,000, which can't, none of those can be processed, right Carolyn, until Election Day?
Exactly.
Yeah.
And just a comment about mail ballots. There are still four to 5,000 out there. I don't remember the exact number, because it changes every minute. But if you have an absentee by mail ballot still in hand, you have until noon on Election Day to get that either to Election Central. You can also bring it to your polling site on Election Day and give it to the inspector at the election site, which would keep the chain of custody in hand. But it must be there by noon or at Election Central by noon on Election Day. So the, there is no extension for hours to get those. If you put it in the mail on Tuesday, it will definitely not be counted. And at this point, your best bet really is to bring it down to Election Central when Election Central is open. So basically, the same as early voting hours. You will not have to stand in the voter line to do so. There is a dedicated door to the right as you're facing the building. That's a single door, and somebody will meet you there and get your ballot. Either they will take it if you are the voter themselves, or if you are somebody entitled to bring in a ballot, but not the voter, you'll need to sign some paperwork.
I also am hearing good things about folks with physical challenges being allowed to move to the front of the line for early voting. I think that's wonderful.
And people have been wonderful about that. So I had a friend who came in who's in a wheelchair and on oxygen, was in line. Somebody told them to go to the door, and everybody said, please let them in early, and actually processed them all the way through as quickly as possible. So if you have a physical disability that prevents you from being able to stand in line, we will try to accommodate you, and people, as I said, have been very good about that. If you don't have that kind of a physical disability, we do ask that you don't kind of crash the line and claim that you do. Bring a stool, bring something to read, and we will try to get you through as quickly as possible.
Excellent. And just to, and just to clarify, I'm so glad you talked about the getting mail-in ballots in. Pretty much across the country, they're saying just, you know, at this point, you should physically bring them in rather than mail them, because we're so close to Election Day. So with the extended hours for early voting, that extends the hours where people can bring in their ballots as well, their mail-in ballots.
Anytime the building is open, they'll be able to do that. And again, a shout out to our post office, who has been wonderful. They actually have been separating those obviously identified ballots and directly bringing them to Election Central. I know somebody who dropped one off in the mail on Sunday afternoon, and it was arrived on Monday. So our postal workers, notwithstanding all the statements that have been made about them, have really been doing a great job. But there's an increase in mail at this time and so forth. And if you don't want to risk that being a problem, bring that ballot down by hand. And again, I'll remind people, it has to be the voter, a bonded courier, a voter's power, somebody who has a power of attorney for a voter or an immediate member of that voter's household. Those are the people that are allowed to bring those ballots in, and of course, your postman.
Yeah, and a huge shout out to the election board, to all the folks who have been working early voting. It is not easy to do. I've done it in the past. And it has been busy and consistently constantly busy from open to close, and that's a lot of work. And we appreciate all of them. And we also want to extend our thanks to all the poll workers on Election Day. So it's great that we've, we have so many civic-minded residents who are willing to serve the community in that really important way on Election Day. So I thank you in advance to them as well.
One of our major concerns was staffing Election Day polling sites, because it's traditionally been difficult to get enough people from both parties to fill all the slots. And this year, people have been wonderful and stepped up. We really appreciate that.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you so much for joining us today. We really appreciate you and all the information you provided to our residents and everyone in the community.
I'll put the hours and the two websites I mentioned in the chat. And anybody who has questions can call Election Central. Those numbers are again on the Monroe County Voters.us website. And they can call their election board member, because we certainly be getting many calls.
I bet you have. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. With that, we will turn it over to Ms. Jessica McClellan, our Monroe County Treasurer, who is going to talk about another November event.
Oh, yes. Hello, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me here again. And thank you, Carolyn. I just wanted to quick say thank you to Carolyn for all those amazing voting updates. And thank you to those poll workers who are doing an amazing, amazing yeoman's job down there, early voting. It's incredible what, how much work they're doing. It's very exciting. And it is fall, and that also means that property taxes are due. So they are due on November 10th, and I'm here to give everyone a quick update on how you can pay. So all offices in the old courthouse are open by appointment only. And this is to keep our community safe and our employees safe. So to make an appointment to pay in person, call our office at 812-349-2530. And if you have questions about your bill or questions about your payment, please call us. We are happy to help everyone with anything that you need. That number is 812-349-2530. So in, since we are in such unusual times, it's important that people use other methods to pay if they can, other than coming in person. One fantastic addition to our, to the possibilities is a drop box. We have a drop box now outside the courthouse. It's outside the north doors, and this is a great way to literally put your payment at our doorstep. And you do not have to bother with coming in or making an appointment. And we check that box multiple times a day, and we will mail you a receipt. So that is a drop box on the, at the courthouse, the old courthouse by the north doors. You can also drop your payment off at Farmers and Mechanics Bank on West Third Street and the two First Financial Bank branches in Bloomington. There is a branch on East Third Street and a branch on North College. And we pick up payments a couple of times a week at the branches, and we will mail you a receipt. The information about the bank drop-off is actually on the back of your bill. We had this set up, we had this set up at the beginning of the year, at the beginning of 2020. So this was also an option in the spring, and it is still a great option for the fall. You can mail your payment to your address, to the address on your bill, and you can pay online or by phone with a credit card. And all of these options and information about how to do them is also on the back of your bill. There is a wonderful press release with all of this information and more on the county homepage under Recent News. And I want to say thank you so much to everyone, every taxpayer, every citizen, because you help fund townships, schools, fire departments, and government services like roads and public defenders and prosecutors and house departments. And I'm sure that the commissioners and I all want to extend a huge thank you in 2020 for your tax payments. And that is all I have.
Right. Thank you so much.
I can answer questions.
Yes, let's see if we do have questions. Commissioner Jones?
No, I'm just glad there are multiple ways. I don't, I didn't hear if you mentioned the website.
Yes, you can pay at the website. You can pay on the website. Go to our homepage, the co.moneroe.in.us, and click an icon that says "Online Tax Payments" or "Pay Your Tax Bill Online." It looks like a little credit card. It's right there, right there, in the, like, right in the middle of the homepage.
Thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, last week, after Ms. McClellan gave me grief about my not knowing where, you know, how much I still owed for this year, she immediately got online and sent me a copy of what I still owe for this year. So if people have problems and don't know what they owe, I'm sure that Jessica's office will help in the same way. And can they call that same number, the 349-2530 number?
Yes.
If they need help.
Excellent.
Yes, we love helping people. We love telling people what they, how much they need to pay. Unfortunately, it's a fact of life.
No, it was, it was just, it made me chuckle to get that, so I will get that sent.
Thank you, Penny.
This week.
Yeah, it's a very, very helpful and friendly staff, and they are there to serve the community all throughout the year, but especially at tax time. They put in a lot of extra time, and they provide a lot of information. So just give them a call or send an email and, or drop your payment off and utilize one of the many ways to do it. We are trying to limit the number of people inside county government buildings to, indeed, as Ms. McClellan says, to protect the community and protect our employees. So it's really important to remember that at tax time. So thank you so much for joining us today, our Monroe County Treasurer, Jessica McClellan. And let's, let me look really quickly here. I don't see any other department updates for this morning. So we will move on to public comment. This will be for items that are not on our agenda. We have a three-minute time limit. See if anyone has any comments they wish to make. Just raise the little blue hand.
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Appreciate your hard work. All right, without any public comment, we will move on to our regular agenda.
Move approval of the minutes for October 21st, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, questions, corrections on this item?
I sent one correction, and it's already been made, I believe.
All right. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes for October 21st, 2020?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Minutes are approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims document accounts payable October 28, 2020.
Second.
Mr. Miller, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was $4,294,190.60. Three million of that was a fund-to-fund transfer from our County General 1,000 to our Rainy Day 1186 Fund. So I feel as if that's worth being noted. $489,921.94 was for E and B paving, which was for actually paving and blacktop surface material. $153,888.51 was for NAR Solutions, which was for tax sales surplus and redemption. $121,250.73 was for Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield, primarily for medical and pharmacy claims. And finally, $96,296.75 was for Life Designs for our third quarter payment.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
No, thanks for always being so clear about these things.
My pleasure.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Again, just indicate by raising your hand.
There are no hands raised.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the approval of the claims docket for October 28, 2020?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to ask my colleagues to indulge me in making a slight change to the agenda. We have an item C, which should actually be a a report rather than a separate item on the agenda. So I will ask that we skip past that. But the report is, just so everybody knows, we've received the report for the semi-annual progress report from the Youth Service Bureau for the federal runaway and homeless youth grant. And that, that report has been submitted under our signatures. So, all right. And with that, let us move on to new business.
Move to approve Ledso Rigert Cooper James Civil Engineering Retainment Agreement. Fund name, County General and non-reverting, number 1,0179, in the amount of $5,000.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Whitmer, morning. Ms. Whitmer?
Yes, my, just so you know, my internet connection is unstable, so hopefully.
You can go to no video, if that helps you.
Freeze on you. Anywho, if I talk fast. Oh, boy. Freeze on you. Anywho, if I talk fast, oh boy. If, can you hear me?
Yes, but you can turn your video off if that helps.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, this is a retainer agreement for on-call services and small research projects for limited land surveying and civil engineering on an hourly basis. What this is for is that it'll enable the park board or the department, if we have a quick question to ask, it'll be done in a timely manner.
Right, thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I was at the park board meeting where we discussed this and it just allows them to go ahead and withdraw small projects without having to get approval each and every time for something small.
Right.
It's very efficient, I think.
Right, so in a way, this is a not-to-exceed for, for the, for the year. All right, excellent. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Again, you just go to the bottom of the screen and raise the blue hand.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Bloodsow-Rigert-Cooper-James Civil Engineering Retainment Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you, sir. Next item, please.
Move to approve the award of a contract to Weddell Brothers for the Limestone Greenway Safety Rail Project. Fund name, GeoBond 2017, fund number 4810, in the amount of $72,300.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell, will you tell us all about it?
Yes, we received bids, or a bid for this. We solicited bids for this. We received one bid from Weddell Brothers for, and then said the $72,300, this is for some safety fencing along our, one of our trails. I would note, for the record, that the packet has a page, and it's page 33 of the packet, that has a Scribner's error. And then, I believe during the beginning part of this meeting that we've gotten that corrected and gotten new information from the, from Weddell Brothers that would indicated that it is for the Board of Commissioners and not for Indiana University. So that, that correction is in place and this vote would reflect that change in the packet.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
It'd be very good to have the safety rails.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, when I, when I saw the, are you listed on the contract? I wondered what was going on there, so thanks for getting that corrected.
All right, let's see if there is any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dayton. All right, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the award of the contract to Weddell Brothers for the Limestone Greenway Safety Rail Project?
Yeah, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
A motion is approved, 3 to 0.
All right, we have already, thank you, sir, we have already dealt with item C, which was a report. And Commissioner Jones, if you would make a motion on item D?
Move to approve Resolution 2020-49, a resolution regarding TSD surplus property.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell, again, please.
Yes, as you are well aware, our technical needs change over time. And once we get new, new computers, because the old ones are no longer usable for us, we go through a process to surplus those and, and get those so that they aren't taking up valuable space for other items. And this is just kind of an annual, at least annual items with Technical Services Department. And so this is their list of things they, they no longer have use for.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No.
All right, let's see if there is any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Right, thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2020-49?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
The resolution is approved, 3 to 0.
All right, thank you so much. And with that, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2020-50 regarding the COVID-19 CARES Grant Fund.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. And we are making you work super hard today, Mr. Cockrell. Will you please tell us about this item?
Well, this item is a direct result of the state guidance dealing with the CARES Fund and how we should manage the accounting of it. Essentially, there are, the idea is that for, for reimbursements for certain employee-related expenses, that money should be, through this ordinance, that money would be directed to the County General Fund. And then for the remaining expenses, it, it tells the auditor to follow the State Board of Accounts guidelines on those, which I don't work for the auditor's office, but I believe, to summarize, it is essentially having correcting entries that would indicate that that funding did not come from where we originally had the claims for, but it would be shown as coming through the fund, the CARES Grant Fund. And so that would clean up the accounting on their end so that it's easy to, for them to show the federal government that the money was spent in an appropriate manner.
Excellent. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Glad that we got the money.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, this is a, a big pot, makes a difference. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is going to the council on their November 9th agenda for consideration as well. Obviously, this is just one part of what has to happen.
Well, if, if I can, the ordinance itself, I don't think goes to the county council.
Right.
Commissioners have that there are appropriations necessary to do some of those correcting entries, particularly, I think, when we're doing the business support, we need to, we need to have that cleaned up for the State Board of Counts as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that. I was being very general. I appreciate your specificity. That's important. Yes, thank you so much. And let's go ahead and see if there are any comments or questions from the public on this item.
There are no hands raised.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2020-50?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Great, thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve a contract with Black Lives Matter Bloomington regarding elected officials' training.
I believe we have some fun, the fund name and fund number and...
I don't have that on my agenda.
Okay, should I go ahead and add it or what's the procedure here?
You can, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, fund name, County General, fund number 1,000, in amount not to exceed $6,250. And I second that motion?
Right, great, thank you for that. Right, so that, that amount relates to the use of, to the use of a virtual meeting, which is different than what was initially advertised in the packet. Mr. Cockrell, will you please tell us about this?
Yes, and maybe I'll start with the changes from the result. Given the current update from this morning from our health department, I think it's been determined that this will be a virtual meeting, which leads to a slight addition in cost. Also, since it's virtual, some of the insurance language didn't make as much sense. The liability for a online meeting is much less to nil than if it were to be an in-person meeting that they are performing at. The, the insurance requirements for, you know, workman's comp and things have not changed, but just the liability insurance has changed for that reason. This is a training that is currently scheduled for January 30th for elected officials to go and be trained by Black Lives Matters on certain matters that they have expertise on. And that is the reason for the training.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
Forward to it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, and I'm sorry I didn't email these earlier. Is, does the contract cover all the cost of any kind of materials that we'll, we'll get? And also, will we be recording this for future use?
I guess, I'm not aware of any recording for future use for this training. I don't think that was anticipated. And, and, but this should be the total cost for all the materials and everything for Black Lives Matters training.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and so, yeah, we, we put out a, this is for, a training for elected officials, especially those who are engaged in policy-making decisions. And we, we're really excited, we're really looking forward to this. This is going to be really good. And it augments other training that we're doing in a really important way. So we're, we're very happy that we could make this work. And I appreciate, Mr. Cockrell, I appreciate all your hard work in getting this contract together. We did want to wait until after the election or early 2020 to make sure that 2021, because we want to make sure that we incorporated any new elected officials into this. So once, once we have election results, we'll go ahead and, and offer this to any, any new elected officials as well. And these are, this will be for county government first. And then we're, if we do have some spots left, there are a few spots. If we do have any, any positions left, we're going to go ahead and offer this to some other elected officials in the community. We'll just contact them by email, once we know how many spots we have left, so that we can fill the class and utilize this training to help more, more folks in the community. So, very exciting. All right, let's see if there is any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Great, thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the contract with Black Lives Matter Bloomington regarding elected officials' training?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Great, thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve and amend an agreement regarding the Wonder Lab Food and Beverage Grant. And I do not have a fund name, number or amount for this.
Second. Right, thank you so much, since this is an amendment. Mr. Cockrell, will you please tell us about it?
Yes, and the reason there is no fund name, number or anything like that is because there's not really any change in the funding. This is all changes in the reporting. When we initially authorized this grant agreement, we allowed them till the end of the year to, to use the funding and then report back two months after that funding was done. They expended the money much quicker than that. And I think they were expended by the end of August. But they didn't want, asked for another month just to get all their accounting and their records put together so that their requirement for giving that is now the end of November. So that's the changes clarifying their reporting requirements.
Excellent, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
No, I'm glad we're able to do this for them.
Yeah, absolutely, and I appreciate that they've been really thoughtful about making sure that, that the timing works, not only for, for their accounting system and their board, but also for us in terms of getting this information reported. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the amended agreement regarding Wonder Lab Food and Beverage Grant?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Great, thank you so much. We'll let Mr. Cockrell take a quick break. And we'll go to the next agenda item, please.
Move to approve Amendment Number 2 with Shrewsbury for the Baby Creek Culvert Replacement Project. Fund name, Stormwater, fund number 1197, in the amount of $43,530.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
Good morning again. So this is an amendment, again, for our Baby Creek Road project. It's one of our Stormwater projects. It's to begin additional, it was for additional right-of-way due to the backwater impacts. The amendment was approved by the Stormwater Board on October 14th.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones? Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, Ms. Ridge and I've had a little bit of an email back and forth. It's for a right-of-way, not a right-of-water.
Yeah.
Had a couple corrections this week. So much, because it's like so many items all at once coming onto the agenda, so.
I, I thought maybe this is another term I didn't know and I needed to learn, you know?
That was just a Ridge, Ridge correction.
Can, can you, for, just for the edification, probably talk about backwater impacts? Where, which is on here? It says backwater impacts.
So I am not an expert on that, but I would say that it has to do with the size of the pipes that they're constructing at the four different locations and what kind of impact that has on keeping the water flow and not creating that backwater condition.
Right, excellent. All right, thank you so much. Let's see if there's any other comments or questions. This is Stump, Lisa Ridge Day. Comments, questions from the public?
There are no hands raised.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dayton, thank you. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on Amendment Number 2 with Shrewsbury for the Baby Creek Culvert Replacement Project?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
All right, thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve an agreement with Bean Longston FLLC for the Curry Pike-Smith Pike Woodyard Road Intersection. Fund name, West Side Economic Development, fund number 4920, in the amount of $298,400.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge?
So this is for construction inspection services. We do this for all of our projects so that we can have engineers on site to monitor the whole construction of the project, make sure quantities are correct with the awarded contractor at the time, and just basically managing the project as it moves forward to completion. The project letting date is tentatively, right now, 2/10/2021, so it would be a 2021 construction year. So the project consists of a dog bone-shaped roundabout at the two offset intersections to improve the traffic flow and safety because of the distance between those two intersections. It's very minimal, probably about 200 feet. So I could answer any questions outside of that.
Great, thank you so much. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
Yeah, I'm very excited to see this happening. That's actually an intersection that I use quite frequently and it is dangerous. I've had a number of close calls there and I think it'll be a big relief to everyone to have that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it also will help. And if you travel that intersection, you notice the congestion on Smith Pike of being able to try and turn onto Woodyard Road in a safe manner. So that will definitely improve that situation also.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Any anticipated completion date?
So if, usually you have, I'm going to say two years. As you guys are well aware, when I bring change orders and such in, it can take a year or two to close out a project. But the major construction... But the major construction of the, and there's a big utility impact in that area. So, we will have to rely on the utilities for relocations and then timing on that. So I know construction will, I'm going to say will possibly go into 2022, but by the time you get contracts, you get it awarded. So, it'll be a good year, probably 2021 into 2022 for an overall beginning to end on construction of that.
Yeah, and we won't, and we won't hold you to that, because we know this can change, especially with utilities, especially when utilities have to move and, and we can only do what we can do, yeah.
That is exactly right.
We're not going to come back in 2021 and say, Lisa, you told us.
Why isn't this done? Yeah.
You promised. So, but I will say that I was bad, and I know what Commissioner Jones is talking about. It's a really bad intersection, but one huge improvement was changing that to sort of a tri-phasal signal, because then there's, there's now a delay. Yes, and that really helps a lot with, with the traffic, especially on Curry. But yeah, so I think that, I'm guessing that that's improved our safety, although I haven't looked at any data, but that would be my guess, so. Very good.
I would agree with you.
Yeah, so that was a really smart move, and we appreciate that until we can get this built, that there is at least a measure of safety that's been, that's been implemented, so. Great, so let's go ahead and see if there's any public comment or questions on this item.
There is one hand raised. Jim Shelton?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shelton, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. Jim Shelton, one of your appointees to the Redevelopment Commission. I urge you to approve this. We're very excited about this for all the reasons that you guys have outlined. Traffic flow and safety are the main factors. So this will really help traffic out there on the west side, and we encourage you to approve it. Thank you, Ms. Ridge, for bringing it to us.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Shelton. We appreciate you being here today.
By the RDC Board, I might want to add that at their 10/21 meeting.
Right. Yes, thank you. Let's see if there's any other public comment or questions.
There are no other hands raised.
Great, thank you Ms. Dayton. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the agreement with Beam Longest and NEF regarding the Curry-Smith Woodyard Intersection?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great, thank you so much. We'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve Change Order Number Three with CLR Contractors for the Cedar Ford Covered Bridge. Fund name: Cumulative Bridge. Fund number: 1135. Oh, and fund amount: $16,189.86.
Second. Great, we have, thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
Yes, so this was, this is a change order for additional compensation to the contractor, which is CLR Contractors for additional quantities that was used during undercutting operation to remove additional unsuitable material than originally planned. So it required excavation a little bit deeper for stability of the foundation. I know this project was completed a little over a year ago, but this is, again, one of the tasks that our construction inspectors do to complete a project is to make sure quantities are correct and monitor that with our local contractors. So sometimes it takes a little bit of time to get everything agreed upon, get the documentations in place and the tickets and things like that. So, actually, this project should be closing pretty much after this change order.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, when I first looked at it, I thought, didn't we just see this recently? And so I went back through, and yeah, we had done another change order last month. But yes, this is definitely a very different thing, so.
Still, still love that bridge. Wish we could all kind of gather and do some things there.
Yeah, actually, we had something planned there, I believe, for this year and a community event. So hopefully next.
I'm hopeful, but for sure by 2022. Well, I'm still hopeful about that. I know, groan. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
All right, thank you Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Change Order Number Three with CLR Contractors for Cedar Ford Covered Bridge?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great, thank you, and it's great that we're keeping an eye on making sure this bridge lasts a lot longer. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve Supplemental Agreement Number One with CHA Consulting, Inc. Fund name: Cumulative Bridge. Fund number: 1135. In the amount of $26,550.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge, again, please.
So we've had a project in our Cume Bridge budget called Lori Lane. And it is a very good-sized culvert. Lori Lane is a one-way-in, one-way-out subdivision off State Route 46 on the east side. So we have been working nonstop with the property owners out there. After we met with a couple of the property owners, it was decided to come in a different route towards the culvert, so for future maintenance needs. So we had to kind of go back and redesign that little entry down by the culvert, coming in off a different property. And we think it's in the best interest for maintenance, for the parcel acquisition, and then overall future cost of maintaining that culvert, once it's replaced. It seems like it also appeased what the property owners were wanting for us to accomplish on getting to that culvert.
All right, excellent work. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
Just thank you for taking into account the needs and desires of the property owners. That's very responsive.
Yeah, I appreciate, you know, it costs us a little bit more. You know, as you can see, we're, you know, we had to go back and do a little bit design. But if you can work with the property owners, that kind of saves maybe for future right-of-way acquisition or mediation or going back and forth to complete the project. And it does benefit us or the county highway in the future for maintenance of that culvert.
Yes, good point. Thank you so much. Is there any public comment or questions on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Supplemental Agreement Number One with CHA Consulting?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve Change Order Number Nine with Milestone for Fullerton Pike Phase Two. Fund name: Fullerton Pike. Fund number: 4922. In the amount of $419.32.
Second. Great, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge?
So when the project was awarded and set up, some of the specification changed for the rapid flashing beacon, which was, I believe, a minor change. So this was actually to get this accepted by the subcontractor to use, change the specification after the project was awarded.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, is this the end of Phase Two now?
Actually, I believe that that should be our last change order on that one. Of course, we're only at change under order number nine, which isn't so bad. When you look at Phase One, that has about 23 change, or yeah, 23 change orders. But I think we are tying up, again, this is one of those that our construction inspector with American Structure Point is going through all the details, working with the contractor to get everything tied down. But I can't say enough of good with my, about Milestone for that project. They completed it in a, in almost a year ahead of schedule. And so we're just kind of tying up those loose ends. But they did get it open last December, like they promised, and they could have well gone into 2021 for construction. So that was, it was a great project. So yeah, this is just going to tie up those loose ends and, and get this closed out.
Great, thank you.
I'd still like to get with the beautification committee. And I know that all got halted, but I would really like to move forward with that, because we have the funds and everything sitting there to see kind of what we'd like to put in that, in that roundabout, since we'll have another one coming down the road, so.
Yeah, I think that would be great. And if you want to throw together a Zoom meeting, you have all the email addresses. I think that would be great. I was thinking about that when I was reading the packet. Boy, it was early morning Tuesday. Yeah, I was thinking like, well, I wonder if we should try to do this over Zoom or if it's going to be too difficult, but at least we could try and see.
Yeah, I mean, if there's something, special plantings or something that's been considered, maybe this is the time of season that you do that. I'm not, you know, I don't bring them at all, so I have no plans, so.
Right, and we do, we need to talk about irrigation, and we need to talk about sort of the art installment. And, you know, this is our first county roundabout. It's not a state, it's not a city, it's a county-owned roundabout, and we want to make it just right, especially for those folks in that neighborhood who have put up with a lot of construction. And, and I think it'll give us a good indicator of what we can do once the Curry-Smith Woodyard Roundabout's completed, because that's going to be the next one.
And that's a really good point you had brought up, because we did decide to go with, I like the concrete that we had used, the stamped kind of concrete that we used at Fullerton Pike Phase One. So we did elect to go ahead and use that on the Smith and Curry Pike. I just think it adds a little bit of appeal to just basic concrete. But again, yeah, you're right, if we can come up with some type of theme that we want to continue with these roundabouts, that would be great. So I will reach out to our beautification committee and see if we can get something going on that.
That'd be great, look forward to that. Excellent. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. All right, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Change Order Number Nine for Milestone, with Milestone for Fullerton Pike Phase Two?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Three to zero.
All right, thank you so much. Excellent. Thank you Ms. Ridge for hanging out with us today, we appreciate it. The next item is going to be coming back, was continued at the last meeting. Would you make a motion to bring the item back, Commissioner Jones?
Move to approve the Personnel Policy Handbook Changes.
Second. Great, we have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, we, as reported last week, we had three, there are three changes to our policy, idea changes to our policy incorporated in this. One is to change sick leave to personal benefit time to give a little more flexibility in scheduling and use of the benefit time we give. The second is to change our bereavement time to make it coincide more with other major employers in the area and kind of give it a more understandable, I think, who gets what for when. And then the third was the training. We added some required training language, and I think we had gotten some feedback that, that may be somewhat problematic. And so, it's not in the packet, but if, but I did, I would offer some changes that I believe I emailed to you last night, and if you wish, I can kind of read those in so that everybody understands what that section will say. And we're talking about Section 2.5 Competent and Inclusive Workforce. And the, the language, and I would note that the Board of Judges and the Prosecutor also have to agree to this. These are kind of last-minute changes with this section. I mean, I think we've discussed it with the prosecutor and the presiding judge, the actual language for the rest, but for this section, this is kind of new. So I want to just note that for the record, that, that they have not had an opportunity to really look at it and, and respond yet. But it would, but that 2.5 section would read, Monroe County Government Must Conduct Trainings to Maintain a Competent and Inclusive Workforce. Competency Includes Both Subject Matter Competency, Which Varies From Office to Office And More Universal Competency Such As Computer Usage and Internal Control Trainings. All Full-Time County Employees Shall Require to Participate in All Universal Competency Trainings As Indicated by the County Commissioners. All Full-Time Employees Are Required to Participate in Any Subject Matter Competency Training As Required by the Elected Official Overseeing the Department. In Addition, Monroe County Government Wants to Ensure Its Workforce Is Competent To Deliver the Required Services and Create an Environment That Promotes Inclusion For Both Employees and the Public. In Order to Be Effective, Sensitivity Training and Implicit Bias Training Must Be Part of a Top-Down Culture That Promotes Diversity and Inclusion And Attempt to Ensure the Same Message and Quality of Training While Adhering to the Separation of Powers Found in State Code. All Full-Time Non-Law Enforcement Employees, With the Exception of Those Working Under the Authority of the Prosecutor and Board of Judges, Will be Required to Participate in a Training Approved by the Board of Commissioners. All Full-Time Employees Working Under the Prosecutor and Board of Judges Are Required to Participate in a Training Approved By the, that employees overseeing elected official. So I guess, maybe, maybe to clarify some of the concepts in there is that, you know, there are some trainings that everybody has to do. And those are, the examples used in this are computer usage training and internal control trainings. I think also from time to time, we have trainings that are requested by the insurance carriers to help keep our insurance rates down. And, and, you know, and, and other kind of, I'm thinking sexual harassment training, things like that, that are, that are universally necessary in order for us to do those things. Those are ones that the Board of Commissioners can say, hey, we've got to do this, because it either has a usage, and, and at the end of the day, all these have a liability or state requirement behind it, policy. Subject matter training are by the overseeing elected officials. The reason that that is excluded from the, that the law enforcement is excluded from the second set is because that, that is a subject matter competency training for the law enforcement employee. They have to go through that, and the sheriff decides that. So in essence, that becomes under that clause. And then the second, the second part of that, that second sentence is just, you know, stating that this is an important issue for the county and that we want to require all employees to do this. And that, yes, the Board of Judges and Prosecutors, they, they get to make those decisions due to the separation of powers in state code. So that's, that's kind of how it is, kind of boiled down and simplified a little bit.
Right, I would, I would ask that the word "A" be removed before, toward the end there, "A" training, an implicit bias. That's how you read it. I, I don't have it open in front of me on this particular computer, but the last, I think it's a penultimate sentence. Necessary to conduct "A" training, right? It should just be training.
Okay.
Is there, you know, there's going to be more than one, I imagine. So, if we could do that. So do we need to go ahead and have a motion made to accept these, this revision? And if so, I will go ahead and make that motion that we accept this revision, an amendment to this Personal Policy Manual Proposal. That would be an amendment on the training section.
And yes, I think you do need that motion.
Okay, and we have a second. Comments, questions from the Board on this amendment to accept the language? Mr. Cockrell read in?
Yeah, I'm very pleased to see it there. I have one question. The last sentence in the first paragraph where it says, "All full-time employees are required to participate in any subject matter competency training as required by the elected official overseeing the department." Should be the elected official or department head inserted there? Or can we just leave it as elected official?
Every department- Every department head has an elected official overseeing them. So I think we really want the elected officials to have, to have knowledge and know what kind of training the employees are doing. And that's why it's written that way.
Okay. That, it truly was a question. I, yeah.
Good question. Okay. Um, so we have a motion to amend, um, our, um, the handbook changes that were proposed in the packet. Um, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on amending our motion?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Uh, the motion is amended three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. Uh, let's see if there's any, uh, public comment on this amended motion.
There are no hands raised.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Uh, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the amended motion to, uh, make changes in the personnel policy handbook?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate, uh, a lot of work from you today, especially, well, all week long, every day. So we appreciate you and the entire legal staff, uh, for all your hard work. We don't have any appointments today. I will note again, uh, for the public that we're inviting, we invite you to apply for boarding, uh, commission appointments. Um, uh, those are typically made at the end of the year or early in the subsequent year. So if you're interested in applying for any, um, particular, uh, board or commission, we invite you to do so. I know we do have, um, some openings, uh, some, uh, spots that we'd like to see, especially, um, on the women's commission and the, South Central Regional, um, uh, sewer district. Uh, so, uh, please, uh, go ahead to co.monroe.in.us and apply. Um, a note that, um, we are keeping our county buildings open by appointment only. That's our intention, uh, through at least the end of the year. This again is to protect, uh, employees and, uh, the community at large. If you need any information on voting, we, um, Ms. Van De Wheel was here at the beginning of our meeting and offered a lot of information about the election. Go to indiana voters.com or monroe county voters.us. Uh, we did set Halloween hours for six to eight PM and, uh, there's a great deal of information on the county website. Co.monroe.in.us and you can find information about the fire stations that are participating in, uh, safe, uh, Halloween, uh, party. Uh, the local fire stations, not all of them are participating, but many of them are and we thank them for that. And, um, some great safety tips, um, on making sure that, uh, we are safe this Halloween. Anyone in the community in our county who is, um, facing obstacles or challenges paying utilities, rent, so shelter utilities, the basic necessities, please reach out to your township trustee as soon as possible. We received information, uh, last week that we're up to $39,000 in township assistance. The commissioners and the council worked together to provide, uh, this additional funding for township trustees to ensure that county residents, um, don't suffer from evictions or utility disconnects, um, especially, uh, during the time of COVID and because of all the economic hardship that this pandemic has caused, uh, so many in our community. Uh, so everyone who lives in Monroe County has a township trustee. So please contact your trustee as soon as possible for assistance. And we are doing, um, a lot to try to help our local, uh, business community. As you heard earlier in our meeting, we did have a, um, a revision to a food and beverage grant. So that was almost $400,000 that, um, the commissioners, um, organized as a grant rather than a loan to help our local businesses and a few social service agencies that are, they're focused on tourism. And now in working with the council and we thank our colleagues for that, uh, we're providing CARES funding, um, to local businesses. So any business in the county that has COVID-related expenses that have not been covered by other means or, and these are non-personnel expenses. Uh, we have grant money available. Again, not alone, a grant. Uh, please go to co.monroe.in.us and apply. And please note as we are heading into, uh, November on the calendar that, uh, we're expecting, that these, uh, applications would be in, including receipts by November 30th. So please, uh, make a plan, um, to ask for that assistance. And, um, we did raise the cap on individual businesses to 20,000 per business. It was initially 10,000. We also have provided, um, a little over $15,000 in funding to taxing units that did not receive CARES funding. So we provided that as well. Uh, the total that we've, uh, distributed to businesses and social service organizations, uh, with CARES funding is $180,217 and that's as of last Thursday. Um, I'm very, uh, happy to note that we are working with Wheeler Mission to provide, um, some funding for a women's shelter for the winter. And that's really exciting and you'll, you'll see some more details on that soon. We, um, will have on our agenda next week, I believe. Uh, and if not that, it'll be the week after. But it looks like it'll be on our agenda next week to have a discussion with, uh, Rumpke regarding, uh, 2007-18, Rumpke's request for consideration of a proposed facility. So for any community members who are interested in that topic, look for that on our agenda for next week's meeting. And lastly, um, I do want to, um, let everyone know that we have decided, um, really happy to, to announce this. We have decided to, uh, hold a public input session on, uh, the convention center and the future of the convention center. Renovation, expansion, the whole project, uh, given the pandemic, given the pause. It's, it's just a good time to review where we're at and where the community's at, uh, before we make any further decisions. Uh, and that will be on November 16th, which is a Monday at 6:00 PM and it'll be on Zoom. Uh, so we hope the community members will join us, um, and give us your feedback, give us your input. We're really looking forward to hearing from folks on that. So we'll, we'll announce that again. Uh, but it'll be on the Monroe County calendar and the Zoom link will be available at co.monroe.in.us. Just go to the calendar at the bottom of the page. So with that, uh, my colleagues have anything else that they'd like to add? I feel like I forgot something and.
Vote.
Yeah, vote. Yeah. Yeah. All right. Well, and again, thanks to everybody in our community for all your hard work and, and do stay the course. Um, we're not going to get out of this pandemic unless we all start acting like it's a pandemic and taking it seriously. And I know we, many of us have for a very long time, but, um, we can't, we can't take our foot off the gas right now. So please wear your mask and please, um, be kind and careful with one another. Wear a mask for your community members to show your, um, that you care about your community, business community. We can't come back from this until we get this under control. And, um, there's some great data out there about how, how, what impact mask wearing has on containing the spread of this virus. So if, if you need any information, let us know. We'll send you links to things that we've been reading and looking at. This is really important. Uh, we want our community members to be here, uh, in 2021 and beyond. So, uh, please take care of each other. So with that, unless there's nothing else, uh, we are going to be adjourned.